Yeah.
Everyone's gonna be crazy.
Yeah. If I.
I'm kidding.
What's it?
And I heard maybe cats could be here somewhere. Yeah, everyone just be going nuts that guy. But we should. Yeah.
The big.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That. Fifteen. It's the one. Twenty two. Yeah.
It's one spirit. They're. Lot there. What's your list?
I'm.
You know.
I'm. Second.
No, some of the. You like a table.
Oh, that.
Yes. Ah.
The. We got a meeting on us.
In. Don't you say please? These looks like. Street. Sausage from basically.
Yeah. And there was one. Yes, that kind of let me. Talk to the bar on his home, but there was a lot that they keep. And then I think both when you go their own.
And then that's not. One is supposed to. Yeah, so this.
And he can speak. A.
Did you get the?
Um. On the.
Yeah. You think you said I say one. You know, when they got this size, you were a lot.
Something.
Again, but it's like sure.
Okay.
Now, if you can just. I go with the deed says. Uh. I guess it's. Go back. Yeah, it's only it's only the back portion. I mean, like all the right.
Yeah. Next.
No. Why? What? No, that's like this. And by. Oh, yeah, it's time.
The very.
Yeah. That's your. Yeah, but I don't even know. It's the. My little son. Oh, that's.
You want. Yeah. Yeah.
All right, ready to go? I'm just. Rachel.
All right. We will, uh. We'll confirm the town of Allenstown. Am I? Am I? We're gonna confirm the town of Allenstown planning board meeting of October first, and we'll start with the pledge.
And that would be. On the inside. And two. Which is. One. Honor. In this. But let me be. Just.
Okay, uh, surprise on the board.
Stan.
Michael.
Larry Ross.
Rest of. Yeah.
Nothing. Not tonight. Uh, Mike.
Well, I'm. Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. Very.
And Mike Amira, and we also have residents, uh, Tobin Farwell, Farwell Engineering Services.
Crystal Robbins.
Joseph. Question about.
Yes.
Yes. Right.
Good. And then online, we have Matt. Online.
Yep. Hi, everyone.
Oh, hi. Uh, all right, so we, uh, we've got full agenda, we'll jump to anything under, uh, old business. No, all right. Uh, so moving on for a new business, we do have a lot line adjustment and subdivision application for, uh, ten Bunny Lane and six Chester Turnpike. Uh, turnpike. Um, and the applicants submitted an application for a map one oh nine lot eighteen and, uh, map one oh six lot four. Totalling eleven point two nine acres, give or take, uh, on land owned by the, uh. Land owned by the same for the purpose of conveying point two seven five acres from lot eighteen to lot four. The sites are located at six Chester Turnpike and ten Bunny Lane within the commercial light industrial zone and the MS four overlay district. Uh, the current use on the sites are residential and nearby or budding uses to the site include residential, cemetery, town garage, and excavation operations. Um. All right. All right. And we page one. We did that. All right, well, we have the applicants, um, present their application. Um, so the description of the proposal, the applicant Philip and Donna Courier, joint revocable trust, and Crystal L. Robbins submitted an application for map one oh nine. Lot eighteen and map one oh six lot four totaling eleven point two nine acres on land owned with, uh, land owned by, uh, the same for the purpose of conveying point two seven five acres from lot eighteen to the lot, uh. T, but lot four. The site is located at six Chester Turnpike and ten Bunny Lane within the commercial light industrial zone and MS four overlay district. The current use on on the sites are residential, nearby or budding uses to the site include a residential, uh, residential, a cemetery, the town garage, and excavation operations. Under administrative details, the Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission initially received a set of plans for the proposed subdivision on September fourth of twenty twenty five. The plan sets reviewed were entitled, uh, boundary line adjustment between Philip and Donna Courier, joint revocable trust. Uh, John Courier, Japhen Courier Mason, uh, Suzanne, is that title? Uh, Suzanne Thoreau, Kevin Courier, Kelly Courier, and, uh, Crystal L. Robbins, tax map, uh, one oh nine lot eighteen, and tax map one oh six lot four. Chester Turnpike and ten Bunny Lane, Allenstown, New Hampshire, and dated June nineteenth, twenty twenty five, and consisted of one feet as prepared by Farwell Engineering Services LLC. Uh, pursuant to the request of the town of Allenstown Planning Board, that in your hand through Regional Planning Commission, review the plans for compliance with the Allenstown subdivision regulations. And applicable requirements, this memorandum is intended to apprise the planning board's bill items required by the Allenstown subdivision regulations that are missing from the plan. As well as zoning and general planning issues that should be considered. But. Uh, at this time, we can invite the, uh, applicant to, uh, present their application.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm here, my name is him, my name is Tobin Farwell, Farwell Engineering Services, I'm here with the landowner, Crystal Robbins. Uh, so the intent, I had done a previous survey of the large, uh, large lot, uh, and we are intending to carve out, uh, point two seven five acres. Uh, and need it over to the owner of Crystal on ten Bunny Lane. Um, I guess just the simple and straightforward wetlands were not delineated on the site. Uh, because. Nothing is really developed on this, I think it's used for some storage. Uh, on the site, uh, nothing is happening, there's no houses, no buildings. Uh, there is wetlands on the site for sure, uh, but again, we have not delineated it because this will not create conflict with the building. And any land that is being transferred to, uh, Crystal, uh, may or may not have wetlands on it. Not part of the part of the thing. Uh, and and part of the right up, we did requests, uh, uh, land area information for the ten Bunny Lane property. I have not done a boundary for ten, that is why that is on on there. I can put on, uh, what the deed of ten Bunny Lane, but I am certifying the outline of this property, not not of ten money lane, so it's just a lot land adjustment. So I am certifying this area to be transferred to that, not what the total area is. Uh, and also, I guess, in response to these comments that we did not locate any well accepted. Clearly, in addition to this, to this lot, we'll make it either any more conforming if something is not conforming, well reused, going off lot, which is not a big deal. But if I could mention that, that looks up as well. Uh, pins, if if and when this, uh, plan gets approved, uh, pins will be set representing the new new property line for lot four. Uh, I think that's mine.
The presentation?
Oh.
Perfect. Yeah. Uh, so Matt, uh, can you, uh, highlight any concerns, uh, or key factors that you have to, uh, to show these applications?
Yeah, so I think, hold on, let me just go right to my memo. So first off, and I know the surveyor just mentioned this, there the larger lot is giving land to the smaller lot, so from the standpoint of. Minimum mod size, it shouldn't be an issue there. Um, you know, with regard to the location of the septic and well, I think the the concern there is just to make sure that it's staying with the lot that's donating the land. Um, so I think, you know, as long as the. Um, as long as, you know, we can say that there's the well and septic are still located on the the donating lot. I think that should be okay. Um, yeah, I think that's really it, we didn't do a TRC. Um, on the potential condition side of things, just a few minor things, the reserve strip, the Merrimack County Registry of Deeds. Requires a one by three reserve strip on the top left corner. Um, so just to add that. Thanks. Touched. Oh, yep, go ahead. Oh, I just wanted to say thanks, I had forgotten about reserving that strip, but I certainly could do that. Yeah, yeah, I think honestly, I think Merrimack's the only one that does it, I mean, you're, I mean, I, we have two, uh, Hillsborough towns, but. Is it only Merrimack? Do you see it in other counties or? I haven't run into a problem with it, and I don't think I consciously put a space for that reserve strip. They put, you know, the recording sticker wherever they can. I know, it's, yeah, we're quirky. Um. Um, yeah, so, uh, like we said, we mentioned the the monuments. Um, and that statement five oh two about the subdivision regs and then the general conditions, but I think, I think that's really it, I mean, at the end of the day, the 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 adjustment. Go, you got land going from the larger lot to the smaller lot, which is what you want to see. Um. You know, a couple minor things, just, um, for potential conditions too. Um, just to denote the acreage and square footage. Um, we talked about that, road width, if you got them, could be a thing, um. Just to put on. But back to the the acreage and the square footage, I believe, is on the plan, so this is, uh, eleven thousand nine hundred ninety six square feet, or zero point two seven five acres, and the. The the bigger lot eighteen is listed as square feet and acreage pre and post the adjustment. But I think. Do you have the? Do you have the post adjustment for the receiving lot? I know you got it for area A. Well, so that's that's the problem, that's what I, I do not have the acreage, I I can't certify the size. Okay. Uh, lot four, because I didn't do a boundary survey for it, I can put on there what the deed states it is, and I'll I'll make a note. But that's, I can't certify that because I didn't do the survey of the entire lot for lot four. Gotcha, okay. Is that, and and tip, that's how it's typically done in in other, right, because they're just, they're doing it from lot eighteen, they're giving up, which I can certify this area. Is going to lot four, but I can't tell you the total because I didn't survey the lot four. Is there just a, I mean, I don't know, you know, is there a ballpark estimate? Uh, yeah, I mean. I can take the deed, I can look at the deed and put that, uh, you know, the deed states, but obviously. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I. Can't serve, I I point a note, that just says the deed area says this. Yeah, I think that'd be reasonable, yeah, just to get a sense for what that is, and getting back to the septic and well, is it far away from that area A? I do not know it, the owner is here, I do not know it at all where the well and septic is.
So. I do not believe that there would be a well or septic on the larger lot, as there's nothing going on there, but on my lot, my.
Okay.
My septic system is actually on the other lot, so it will make my lot not conforming.
Oh, see that, so.
So my septic, um, uh, my beach field is right here on the other lot, so.
Oh, okay. I didn't even know that.
Today. Now I don't.
So that could. Yeah.
Yes.
Just for. Yeah, for the property owner, I think that could be just useful to have on there, just so that, you know, down the road. You know, it's always good to know where it is, or at least get an S, you know, a ballpark of where it is. Uh, yeah, I could I could put on there, uh, a s- an asterisk and say approximate beach field location.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, I think that would cover that, uh. Uh, surveyor, comment, monument, statement, subdivision regs, um, really quick, on the road width. Do you have any estimates, did you come across anything that might have suggested it, like granite and Chester? Oh, I I believe it is a fifty foot, uh, for Chester. I'll, uh, I have not, I think it's variable width, I I think, uh. Chester is very, uh, Grant Street rather is variable width, I think Chester is fifty, but I'll look at it, look at it. Okay, yeah. Yeah, I guess, I mean, that. I think that's reasonable, I don't have any other, uh, comments other than that, no waivers. I didn't see any site plan, uh, subdivision reg issues, we talked, talked about the lot size. We're becoming more conforming, which is good. And that's really it, um, and just a reminder, procedurally, you know, completeness, regional impacts. Public hearing and go from there.
Yep. Thanks, Matt. Uh. At this time, we can move on to regional. Yeah. Uh, we'll move on to, uh, discussing if this is a, uh, project of a regional. But then after discussion.
It's serious.
Do not see how it would be.
Okay. Uh, so do we have a motion?
Uh, maybe motion that it's not a project of regional impact.
All right, motion made by Mike.
I'll second that.
By Kathleen, we'll call vote.
Mike Jay, hi.
Well, hi.
Mike, yes, bye.
Ryan. She passes. Uh, no waivers, um. Yeah, so no waivers to, uh, to consider for this application, so we can move on to, uh, application completeness, so, um. Open up the discussion and, you know, whether we feel the application is complete.
I have a question. Um, there is a star in the middle of area A. Does that indicate anything that's not in the legend, or are you considering locus, so in area A, it's star?
They do see that. Uh, no, because that's a, the star is references that, which is a little unclear, to be combined with lot four. So that was the intent, that asterisk is inside area A with a star, and so the star means to be combined with lot four, so that area goes with lot. Yeah, that's not very clear, I mean, I can, I can put a box around this and move it off to the side. And it was just, you know, I didn't want to point to it. Right, everybody catch that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Like indicated like, um, a monument or something like that.
I know.
I think it makes sense.
Oh, man.
Thank you.
We'll get on that draft person about there. You know, here the application, uh, letter of. So. Great. Oh, no, this issue, yep. Uh, any other comments on application completeness?
I feel it is. Has all information you need. So therefore, say it's completely has is.
Do we have a motion to accept the application as complete?
So.
But, uh, everything away? Second by Mike. We'll call vote.
Kathleen, I.
Mike Jay, I.
Well, I.
I guess, I.
Ryan. All right, well, application is complete. And at this time, um, we can open it up to the public hearing at six forty six. All right, I open the whole hearing, uh, at six forty six at this time. We have any comments from the public?
Mister Chairman, there are no people online.
Okay.
Unless anybody else in the room wants to come.
We're gonna fight with you now?
No, I know, but I don't want to fight with you.
Uh, then I close the public hearing at six forty six, um, six forty seven, um. Excellent. Uh, all right, so we can, um, move on to, uh, final deliberation and, um, final approval, so. Uh, on the conditions for approval, Matt, I know that you had indicated a number, um. Should we, we'd like to discuss the conditions of approval, um, some are all, which should be included in the app, um, new approvals.
Yeah, yeah, I can, if it be helpful, I could run through some potentials again, um.
Not that, if I. This has been talked about earlier today.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
And Matt, there was some, uh, maybe you got through the first. Five on your list for potential conditions, but I don't know that, uh, we addressed the backup list, so.
Okay.
Number six through eight.
Six through eight, let me see here, hold on a sec. Uh.
I just asked that we re-review, uh, numbers of two, three, and four, the other segments in particular. Uh, just exactly conditions, well, what I say, sure, so the original condition was the lot size. Enablements were required for lot four, which was kept on the plan, indicating that, um, woman would get the, uh. Area, the current area from lot four to the D, and then add the two numbers together and put that on the final plan. Yeah, so that's what that would now, that would now mean, that's, okay?
That's okay.
All right, um, the location of, uh, septic and wells, uh, there are no wells, correct?
There are, well.
Oh, well.
It's in the front of the house.
It's in the front of the house, okay, so that does need to be shown on the plan. It it would be approximation, I'm not going to survey locate. It can approximate, and also that fact that the, um, leach field will be. In the new.
Yeah.
The new, the new piece.
Yeah.
Uh, so yes, so it's just indicating again the approximate location on. And then the, we talked about the road.
Yeah.
Just, it takes some.
And then the reserve strip as well. All right. Thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention, I heard something about reserve strip. I'm just playing the pot of the love, oh, we have a strip on that.
Yeah. Say that to the surveyor, so. Uh, all right, Matt, back to you, any other, uh, conditions that we should consider as part of this application?
I, I don't think so, I think what Mike described, that should work. Um, just to reiterate, the general locations for septic and well is probably fine, because, you know, um, yeah. Uh, we're not, the the larger lots giving up the land as opposed to the smaller. But yeah, no, I think that works.
Thanks, Matt. All right, so what I'd like to do is read the pre-division, so we can capture them for the minutes, also when the, for the, for the approval or denial, yeah. So the, uh. Potential conditions of approval are that a, a one by during which a reserve strip shall be added. To the top left corner of the final plan from Merrimack County Registry of Deeds. Or technically, I'm fourteen eighteen, five oh oh one dot C, five oh oh one dot G, five oh oh two dot C, and five oh oh two dot E. A lot size and enablement, what are thought of for lot four will be captured on the final plan. Um, check this time you say. Approximately. It'll be from the, as of the start, it'll be from the B and the the new, the new. Thank you. Survey, so whatever those numbers added together. Um, technical side of fifteen, five dot zero one dot D, and five dot zero two dot C. The location, the general location of septic and wells shall be indicated on the final. So the general location as we talked about.
Yeah.
Um, number five, a plan, no time by the surveyor, regarding the monuments being set under your subdivision shall be added to the final plan. And number six, a statement per affecting five dot zero two of the subdivision regulations, shall be added to the final plan, indicating that the subdivision regulations are part of the plan. And number seven, on the general administrative condition of approval to be following, uh, professional standards, signatures, survey, and wetland scientists. Have all the ownership will be on the final plan, um.
And no wet, no other scientists, no wetland has been delineated, so no wetland scientist.
So that will amend that to say, professional stance and signature of the surveyor. Of. The surveyor. So that's amended to read. Professional stance and signatures of the surveyor, as well as all the signatures shall be on the final plan. Uh, there are no waivers, so there were no nerves, just granted. But the conditions of approval will be on the final plan.
Okay, that's fine.
So number. Bullet number two of number seven is amended to say that the condition of approval that I did on the final plan. And number eight, final plans as approved of the planning board, shall be provided to the planning board in digital format as described in the banners. If you memorandum, and that has laid out in memorandum, what typically, uh, acceptable formats that we use, okay? Are there any other commitments that we will just to discuss or invoke?
And it's. And in our motion, can we just refer to vertical as read by? All right, uh, all right, so we have a motion to conditionally approve the application P V dash zero three, that's twenty twenty five.
Ooh.
For the moves? Second by Duane? We'll call vote.
Well, I.
All right, Ryan, I. Application is approved.
Approve both conditions, and we will be doing, I know, so considering, done the next several days, and get it to you, well, well, together, well, we can get it to you.
Yeah, right, right.
And.
So right, with those conditions, I can put those conditions on the.
Yes.
Plan for you guys, so the conditions we just talked about will be listed on the end of the, so where do we get that, and then pop them on the plan?
That'll come from Matt?
I'll send it up to you.
Okay. Yeah. All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is. Um, what, what video is it? Uh, we have like no backyard, or we, it's been used by, um, eight people, it's been there for like forty years, you know, so I just reached out and they were very, you know, the. They're like, yeah.
Yes. We've been bowing it all the time.
The initiative. Yeah. You guys all at the next part. Yeah, I heard it was wonderful. They both.
Thank you, you guys.
Uh, we've got the group minutes, it's number seventeen. So a motion to approve the, uh, minutes from the September seventeen kind of meeting.
Ooh. Eight seconds.
I guess. We'll call vote.
Kathleen.
Okay. Bye.
Ryan.
Very good.
All right, correspondence.
Um, so we just have that document, like, presented by.
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're, yeah. Uh, if you want to go through another, or you want to? Let me see.
I think we can, uh, any objections to doing it tonight? Yeah, I did, uh, I put together a little matrix as well, where I thought it would go, but. All right, so in no particular order, uh, last, we'll start with, uh, H P on. All right, so starting with H P ninety two, uh, refusal for, um, planning orders, U D A members. I think we discussed the planning hours, rules of procedures, where it seems like this one should belong. Yep. Um, H two ninety six is the, uh, regarding the regulation of subdivision of land, to me, this feels like it goes in our zoning ordinance. What do we think on this one?
Which was that again?
Yeah, H two ninety six, um.
Two ninety six.
Uh, we have, uh.
Oh, I see it right there, yeah.
Last.
Ring of streets.
And three different places. And we don't talk about class six at all, and I know this is private, but kind of. So it's kind of, um, I think we can treat it the same way we treat the one, uh, uh. Plastic roads.
Yep.
Yeah.
We have. A, right now, we don't mention private at all, really not in this context, you know, so how to talk about hills, that's something we don't mention, so either we don't mention it, or. We take this time to start to talk about private roads, and we're talking about class six, I think it'd be good to. Talk about both of them, too. Uh. So we're, we're not giving it to, have though. You're a brass taxpayer. Yeah, well, thanks, I know, we have, we have a, uh, plastics. Um, guidance document.
Yeah.
Don't have a private road guide, sorry. And private road could be approved by someone, and in the same way, classes can currently be approved by someone, so I'm thinking, you know, we upgraded that document to include both, knowing that.
Next year, the class six part will probably drop out. But we might be able to use that to a private road.
So ours will be a slight.
And I'm thinking that we go to chapter thirteen. And we add whatever regulations you're on, put it there for the private and classics. And that we also, because we mentioned in five oh six, thirteen eleven point one one. And eighteen oh three point one seven. Specific subdivisions and I don't know further in the back, but at those three locations, we talked about things that. Aren't allowed on a class six, but they will be in the future and we should expose the match, whatever we. Go inside and make them put in chapter thirteen. For private and class six.
Are these two things in parallel? Yeah, we did, we could do that, yeah, we could put them in, uh, so. So we'll capture the last six on private in chapter thirteen. Matt, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, you know, Mike mentioned the um, the um. Classics road policy, and that's exactly right. I mean, the way the RSA was originally set up, or let's say last year. It described the same process for both private and class six. So yeah, I mean, I think it makes sense to. To, you know, keep it in that, or make sure it's in that document. And I think truthfully, the way this is gonna play out with this one, I don't think we're gonna see a lot of this on the planning board side. I think the selectmen are, but um. Yeah, just kinda. Gauging it, I don't think we'll see much. A-actually, when's the last time you guys did a classics road review? For a building permit?
Not in my lifetime, I'm on the board, that's for sure, so.
Yeah, I really don't, I don't remember one.
The last one was on the end of Dallas Road.
Wait a minute, Chad, is that the one where is the guy had a, like a hammerhead turnaround or something like that?
No, he was just going out past the power line or, yeah, the power line, he was doing, it was totally off grid.
Okay. Okay.
That was the last one I saw. I don't even know if he ever, I haven't been out there in years, so I don't even know if anything happened with it.
Yeah. I know a few of the other towns, like more out towards the west in our region, they're getting a decent amount of these, so. Uh, but, yeah.
Uh, and I think that one probably covers two nine six and two eight one, yeah, right, alright, so uh H P four one three, this is a long one. Um. Kind of boiled down to seven year vesting and subdivision site plan exemptions. Followed some housing appeals board stuff, so I I kind of identified this, it goes into the site plan and subdivision regulations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Subdivision regulations. We mentioned, we only mentioned the five year, exactly once, and it's indirectly mentioned, is how much time you have, I figure is uh. Uh, article four, oh four, Baker. And it mentions you're on a five year duration, and so we might need to extend it to seven.
But something like this, it's two, this, this, this is two and a half pages.
And it's a long one.
How much of that actually has to go into?
Just change it five to seven.
Literally changing to five to seven and having a three year.
The seven seven totally.
But as far as this is so.
Give you the whole story.
So I didn't come and say, hey, we need to change five to seven and add it first.
Yeah. To change, but you know, well.
Alright, so we'll put that in the subdivision, right?
Yep.
Okay. I like it. S B uh S B two eight two. Um, for stairway allow, once stairway allowed in certain buildings.
S B.
I was thinking like the leading code preference. That's why I didn't want, I don't think we belong in the. Zone ordinance, we'll talk about it, right, because we, the planning board does not really get into the inside of buildings, that's more like. Code enforcement. Um, so maybe we just leave that for the building inspector, code enforcement officer to to figure out.
Yes.
Yeah.
Given that Brian is absent.
Voluntold.
Voluntold, you gotta show up to.
That's right.
Uh, second. Preface, um, I've talked about I D C International Building Code. You could add that. Phrase not understand.
Where?
If you want that, uh, which are good, like section one of the zoning ordinance, preface. Uh, number one.
Okay.
That's nice, and then there's I D C International Building Code, that's fire code. You could put it as a I D C.
And it's different ones, it's pretty strange that it's saying, can't have less than two options. The problem would be, I think, what then? Say twenty opportunities. I'm sure what they're driving at, it's just two. Yeah. Not less than two. Can't require less than two. You can work to, to kind of listen to. That's how you are this. Alright, um, S B two eight three, so this is the um. Maximum capacity and high potential for new construction, uh, the far definition and below gray areas. Zoning, I mean, I think the next four, I I thought zoning ordinance, but. It is like a zoning topic.
I didn't see anything in the zoning ordinance that we talked about this, or when it in any way, so.
Well, we will have to have it be something that fits.
Yeah.
So, uh, again, I think, uh. Or chapter thirteen, the new section is chapter thirteen, bro. Alright, H P uh four five seven. Which is the occupancy limits, um. Again, zoning ordinance is the only place that we can explicitly explicitly call this out.
Yeah.
They don't know anywhere else to go.
Did you already start drafting that, or two twenty two or something?
Yeah, so I think this is another, uh. Chapter thirteen addition, I think, after someplace, literally don't have any words attached to it, some of it's, some of it's.
So I.
No, I don't have, I I don't put, um.
So I think for four, five, seven, I think. As I read it, we just need to make sure we don't have that language in there, so I don't know if we need to do anything with that if we don't have it.
Uh, so you're you're reading, not getting this section, which not prohibit the enforcement of the state building code or state fire, as it doesn't need to be in there?
Are you, are you talking about uh H P four five seven?
Yeah, H P four five seven, like one and two stating that. As long as we don't have language in the regs.
Yeah, as it has enacted, the town of Allistown shall not adopt any ordinance that restricts the number of occupants. Um, so I think it's just telling us we can't create an ordinance that does that. Um.
What about a world where uh somebody has a question about whether that's a regulation, would it be better to have it explicitly called out?
Um. Should've. I don't know, I mean. Accords with the six seventy four sixteen.
Matt, would this be better for the site plan rights?
Uh, maybe. Um, let me, that could be why we just check with N H M A. Just to kind of get.
This was not very helpful.
Yeah, especially like the, the one with the uh multifamily and the commercial zones where it basically said, you know. Uh, attorneys will figure it all out. Um. What were you guys thinking on that one?
And what I'm concerned about is not capturing something that the town later. Doesn't realize they're doing something incorrect, because they had it done, and they're not in compliance with the law, and that's what I'm concerned about.
Okay, okay.
Because.
And where were you guys?
I would want to remember this, right, so.
Yeah. Where were you guys thinking about putting this again?
Well, we have chapter thirteen, which is the general, you know, general regulations.
Yeah.
It's probably the only place we could put it, but.
Yeah.
Chapter thirteen.
Yeah, I. If you were gonna put it in, I would think that would make the most sense, yep.
Alright. Um. H P five seven seven, uh, regarding accessory dwelling units, we have something. We do, we're already in compliance for the detached A D U's, the only thing I think we need to check on that is the limitation on the signs. Because I think that increased this year. So, yeah, so we need to check the uh, we need to check what are already allows the current signs. If I don't do that, and um assuming I really need to modify that, I will put the new size in the in the.
Permissibility, granting the permit, the, we also would need to add, so just a couple things on the A D U's. I would agree with Mike to add that, but we also need to, under thirteen oh six three. It's supposed to be um building permit only, so we would need to make that change too.
Okay.
Uh. Yeah. An address detached versus attached.
What do we do? We have detached and detached.
Yeah.
Given Matt's comment, does that also need to be included in building code enforcement anywhere? No, because this is on, probably going to enforcement officer will go for this one more, and it's a separate. And then mul- multifamily on commercial land. Yeah.
Yeah.
Man, it's got zoning in in like seven times in itself. You know, it's zoning.
It's it's it's. Is that a uh? A weasel, a weasel word, phrase, it starts off that state, but not with standing. Gotta get this hour.
No, that's exactly what's in the law.
So, and and.
In.
Which zones are affected by that? It's not just our commercial zones. Our.
Well, commercially, commercially owned lands.
Yeah, and it defines it as.
Yeah.
Any zone, land zone, sort of like commercial activities as retail office, basically.
Or out of stock, the business only and industrial.
Yeah.
It's actually, yeah. Yeah, that's that's, yeah.
So I would agree with that, and one other thing too, um, is that it, the RSA talk, or the new, the new change talks about. Adequate infrastructure.
Yeah.
And they did have, I forget who I. There's a draft floating around one of the other towns, where they actually have that language from the uh N H M A that suggested. Basically, what they did is they took the, um. To generate the list of infrastructure, they took, I think it was from the uh, the. Um, impact fee ordinance under six seventy four twenty one, or wherever it is, and they just listed that. But to me, the question is, what does adequate mean? I don't know. I mean, maybe that means the ability to. If there's sewer and water there, get get a permit for it, for it. And if it's a well in septic, it's probably the ability to get, get those approved as well.
The way I don't do this, like, the way I read this anyway, is that that would be a matter for the planning board to discuss. Side of the pine review and.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Planning board will look to the surveyor or the hope or to say, hey, you know, you have to tell us and. Show us that you have enough capacity in sewer and water. Since they buy it, my email, whatever it might be, to support the request of development. And to me, if that could not be proven, then the planning board would not be obligated to permit. Development on that part. And I'll do it.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, it's definitely gonna be, I mean, cause all uh multifamily, it's all, they're all site plan reviews anyway, so it's, they're all gonna come before us, so. That makes sense.
So, um, so I'll add that. Uh, someplace.
Yeah, yeah. Eight, nine, ten, ten, or you have a second thirteen.
Yeah.
Chapter thirteen wanted to address these.
Yeah.
Do we want to go on three?
There's a lot. Oh, this is the, this is the only preliminary, and find a hall for it, and then we'll review with everybody again. And then we'll review it with the attorneys.
Yes.
Or our reviews. There's nothing that we can.
Right.
So, uh, so I think. I think I'll add this to every zoning location. Because that way it's all in one, when 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 a developer goes to industrial or commercial, they want to be able to see. Pretty much everything is sorted in with that.
And we're going to do the charters.
Yeah, and we'll add it to the yard as well, the back, yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay.
And okay. Any other updates uh to discuss on the legislature legislative manus, please? Okay, so.
Is there any? Put it back from the municipalities on H P six thirty one, looks like I do, but it's like you can put it back here to. Bring it there, I think, there. Go through and put it all in.
Yeah.
Going around, and then then here, both the way, we still have it.
Well, unfortunately, uh, if we don't put it in on zoning ordinance this year, we'll be out of compliance with.
Yeah, but I know.
Some of these are.
But I'm, but I agree, you use language like, uh. Provided, six, seven, some, something like, if six, seven, four, seven, seven changed. Then we've already got the filter statement out where it's not allowed, I'm sure that I'll really say that, but.
Well, absolutely no.
Start the state like.
The RSA is actually, it's covered. Because the RSA is how effective it is now. So even though our zoning ordinance says one thing, if the law has changed. The board is required to comply with the law, not really.
Yeah.
If the law changes where municipal time for a lot of things, but our zoning ordinance says it is allowed. Then it'll still be allowed, even if it goes back unless you put some sort of language in there that.
But again, if if the law was a change, say, um. May or may not be allowed or something like that, and that would be the law. So even though zoning laws would would say is allowed, the law as it says may not be allowed.
Yeah, but we can allow.
You can.
The only thing, and that's what would affect.
Yeah.
Then in case if it changed, still allowing it.
Yeah.
And we would have to change it here for one, and here for two. Otherwise, you would need to put some sort of language. But if it doesn't sound like this big outcry in the state is gonna change, then that. Might not.
Yeah.
Through that exercise. Just.
Even if there is, it it might, my thought is, like, even if there is an outcry, I don't know that we can presume. Whether the law could or could not change in our.
What Mike is saying is that this provision in it that says. Change, then we're speaking with it, which I I I think is worth the time and effort to do. Uh.
So we could simply say.
It's always.
As currently enacted. For example. And then that would say.
And then the lawyers look at that, excuse that.
And the lawyer limited to say, well, it's currently enacted, and what it changed last week, so that's as currently enacted. By support. Um. I think. Yeah, struggling to do, I'm struggling to, certainly, we, we, trying to say how to how to word it, I guess it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, night. Yeah. Yeah. Great. Uh, did you get any updates from um the building inspector, Brian? No, Ryan did not have any updates in the moment for four minutes meeting. Um, again, there are a bunch of potential changes coming down the line. Also legislative. Also, let's say, like, on spec, yes. We prepare. We could get some early in the year, we could get some later, like, you're, you're, we get some later in the year. We could get some that won't apply in twenty twenty seven, yeah, like we had on this year, there wasn't a fight. Says, but it's in one of those periods in between when we'll be able to make a change to the zoning ordinance, so capture. Uh, so. And on top of that, on top of the new ones that they're talking about, uh, there are uh, a bunch of ones that were tabled. Or sent back to the entity. That may end up coming through the legislature again and may or may not make it through this time. So we don't know, this, as we don't know yet, uh, we probably will not know till early. Here, probably in January, late January, early February timeframe. Get an idea again of how things are looking and um, have even mock separate N H M A on that. I think it's all things are about to finish, man, right? So, um. Stay close for now, uh, but the, the list is going every week.
Yes, it is.
For next meeting, do you have a? With our agenda, we have a, a heavy agenda already set up for the next meeting. So stay tuned for the October two meeting on today. And anything else for tonight? We have a motion to adjourn.
You're right. Uh, certainly.
Roll call though. Mike, you're right. Yeah, bye.
Ryan. Uh, seven nineteen, everybody. Matt, thank you. Matt.
Thanks, everyone.
I heard that you, uh, you're officially retired from the coast guard, so thank, congratulations and thanks for your service.
I am, thank you, yeah, it was uh, it was kinda weird, I uh, actually got a um. Mike Geranti, I tried to log into my email this morning, my Coast Guard email from the house. I actually could, I don't know, when does your C A F get shut off?
Cut off before I left my retirements.
Yeah, well, I found out I have to go get my retirement I D card tomorrow. What's up?
Nobody came to my office with a box and I'm going.
Well, I'm watching those hurricanes creep up the coast, and I'm like, man, I'm, I'm safe now, I'm not gonna get called for those.
I bet it's a little bit extreme, but again, congrats tomorrow, thanks for uh.
Thank you. It is weird, but you know, it, it's good, so.